All meetings are ordered. Dr. Dowd, would you please place the plate?
Sure.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on our agenda is approval of copier bids.
Okay, so our current five-year lease for copiers is up on August 20th. So I'm glad this actually works out. We send information to six different copier companies and I sent you a synopsis of all those bids. GFI Digital was the lowest price with Sharp copiers. And when I say it's an approximate cost, it's because it depends on the number of copies we make. There's a flat rate for the lease for the 10 copiers, but then you get charged so much a page. So I'm not gonna say approximate cost, but this is based on last year's usage. GFI would be $17,290.89. Copy products was the second lowest bid. GFI was using Sharp, I'm sorry. Copy products was the second lowest bid with Toshiba copiers at an approximate rate of $7,699.65. Obviously depending on the number of copiers. So when you... Our current copy company, which is Rico USA, is the highest there. They were higher even with the manufacturer issues.
So what have you had the best luck with?
I've used all types of copiers.
How many have you had?
So, you know, I think Sharp, Rico, Toshiba, those are the top brands. I think you're fine with any of those. They all seem to be reputable companies. I called references on the top two and received positive references on both of them. Probably, is Toshiba probably maybe a little better than Sharp? I don't know. It's probably a bigger name. But GFI goes the lowest with Sharp copiers.
What do you recommend?
I think it goes to the lowest. That will save us... PJ, you and I figured it right at $8,000 a year. Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion to go with GFI Digital, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. There, I sprinkled it.
Do we have a motion to go with GFI?
GFI Digital.
GFI Digital. Do I have a second?
I'll stand.
Any second, any discussion? You got Dan on there?
Dan's over there.
Dan's over there.
Hello, Dan.
Hi. I can't really hear all the discussion or the motion and the second. Is it time to vote?
Any discussion? Time to vote.
Dan, do you vote yes or no?
Yes.
Everybody else, show hands. One, two, three, four, five, six. Four. Zero. Second item is approval of Chromebook purchase.
So as you know, in this year's budget, we budgeted $50,000 for Chromebooks. That would get us right at a little over one to one, but replacing some old outdated Chromebooks that are no more, they're at end of life, you cannot update them anymore. So we send out bids, but before I get there, I want to... Today, I was on a couple of different conference calls today and there's actually gonna... It's good news. The state is releasing some additional funds to us for Wi-Fi access and devices. So I have to go through and write the grant. I got the 40-page document right before I left the office. But our allocation was $12,000 for Wi-Fi access and then the remainder of that could be used for device purchases. There has to be a match, so the district would have to match part of that. But that's good news. So what I'm asking you to spend, we're gonna recoup part of that money back. Plus, we might be able to... We've looked at K1, looking at some iPads. We may bring you a purchase in the future with pre-K, I'm sorry, pre-K and kindergarten just because they're easier to use for those kids to manipulate. But we have, we got three bids for Chromebooks. We got one from CDI Technology. The bid was $58,412.50. We got one from Scholarbuys that was $55,250. And we received one from CDWG for $60,747.50. The concern I have about the low bid and this issue is that is a different brand of machine. It's Lenovo. We have all HP. So Hewlett-Packard Chromebooks, we have parts for those. John is certified to fix. And we have kids, kids that are certified to repair those Chromebooks. You know, I think a Chromebook's a Chromebook, but when we start looking at parts, you have to have, you have to have pieces and parts to be able to fix it. So we'd have to buy stock as parts. So my recommendation is to go with the middle bid of CDI. Now, the question for the board, if we want to stay at that $50,000 limit, we can buy 214 Chromebooks. If we want to buy all 250, it would be $58,412.50. Again, we are gonna be able to access some funds to offset those costs for us.
How much?
So the allocation to the Ava School District is $65,000. I have to fill out the paperwork. Part of that is for Wi-Fi, $12,000 of that is for Wi-Fi access, so access points. Like we did at the high school. When COVID hit in March, we put a Wi-Fi access point so people could pull into the parking lot. We can do some things like that. Just trying to extend your Wi-Fi outside your walls. There's $12,000 there and then the remainder of that, so whatever that is.
So looking at... Yeah. So looking at that money that we'll get, what's our incentive? How much to spend to be able to max?
So, so it's a 75-25.
Okay.
So I'm gonna bring you another purchase probably if we get approved for that of iPads. So I wouldn't wanna...
Right, okay.
When I, when I sit down to write that grant and figure out, I'm okay with spending the 58,412 buying all 250. I'm okay with that because I'm gonna be able to access some dollars to bring that number down and then we'll have some additional dollars to look at pre-K and K iPads. So I'll manipulate those numbers with the State Department so they work for us.
We did a motion?
I, yeah, for buying 250 or 214.
I'll make a motion to purchase the quantity of 250 of them through CDI.
CDI, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Randy makes the motion. Do we have a second? Troy, seconds. Any discussion?
I would agree. From my experience, the HP is a better brand to go with than...
We were just trying to get three quality bids.
Yeah. And that's why we would be going with the CDI bid too.
Are you hearing this, Dan?
No, I'm just gonna stay on the vote because I can't really hear all the discussion.
We have a motion to who? Do I need to explain it to?
So Mr. Johnson, you have a motion to purchase 250 Chromebooks from CDI for the sum of $58,412.50. We're gonna be able to access some funds from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to reimburse us for a significant portion of that cost. Did that help?
Yes. Well, I guess that would be the yes vote then.
Do we have any more discussion? All in favor? Collect a vote of six and a motion passed. Third item on the agenda, approval of transportation contract. Let me explain it, Troy.
So we have two small adjustments to make to the contract that we approved at the last meeting that we worked on that. So I will just go ahead and make a motion to make those two changes and I'll give you this afterwards and you'll have the exact wording.
Let's, let's tell everybody what...
So we're putting a disclaimer at the beginning of the agreement for right to contract, which that disclaimer is the same as what we already approved on the other right.
He can't, he can't open his door.
They will have to see... No, he doesn't think. Depending on the bus, he said, and I said, well, we have all different types of buses. But depending on the master switch, he does not think at this time they would have to be.
I did have one more thing because that jogline I'm working on whenever we did the, with the cameras. Page numbers didn't print off on this, but it looks like from the contract that we had last meeting, it looks like it's on page three of the service of bus route. With viewing stop farm violations or the video footage, it says is the, the party shall define by the Ava Roadline School District, but shall include superintendent, assistant superintendent, the contract owner, owner of route, driver, the current school board president, one additional school board member chosen by the contractor. Is that still in there or did we change that last meeting? Is that what changed?
It's, no, that didn't. The way that reads is the, the school district does define it so they can add people, but it shall include...
It has to include one, two board members, a president.
Well, no, I think we changed some of that.
That's what I was making sure that that did. Actually, if I didn't get an updated contract.
Yeah.
So I thought you, I wanted to make sure that that was because I don't see how a board member, whether it be president or a board member, should do any student investigation, I don't think.
I think we went ahead and we took that out.
Okay, okay, I thought so. I wanted to.
That was one of the things we voted on. That's one of the things that everybody talked about, discussed.
I remember that. I just, like to begin, I didn't have the updated contract. I just have the one from last meeting and want to make sure that that was clarified.
Right, so, yeah.
Okay.
Thanks.
I just wanted to get that camera.
Item number six, approval of right to contract bus route number one. I assume everybody has looked at the information that was emailed. Were there any other information on candidates? People said they were interested in the contract?
Two of them are probably here, I think. I think two of them are here. Two of them. That's on the line.
Jessica McNish.
I'm not sure exactly how we need to go about this. Any ideas?
I would think maybe we could, I mean, each of us have read these and have an idea. Maybe we could have a piece of paper and write down the name that we think and see if that is good enough to conclude that. And then hand them all the, Dr. Dowd, and you can look at it and tally it up.
Okay. Do you want a rank or do you just want one? Level, do you want a rank? Rank order or do you just want one? And I'll be, I'll pick up the phone to talk to Dan. Okay, what kind of ads am I? I don't know. Everybody? What are, is everybody? Tell everyone what's like. I should say, yeah. Push my computer. Please.
Yeah.
You have one more, Jim? And then we have a micro motion that is correct?
Yes. Do you want to make the motion? I'll give you this paper.
Yes. Wow. Impressive.
I'll make, what again? So I'm not...
Is that correct?
Got one more. It's correct?
That's correct.
By unanimous vote, I make a motion that we approve the sale of right to contract for bus route number one. Is that my sentence right?
Yep.
To Jessica McNish.
Thank you.
Motion, the motion has been laid to award contract for bus number one, right to service agreement. Jessica McNish. Do I have a second? Randy, seconds. Any discussion? Are you hearing this, Dan?
Uh, I think you said it was a motion for McNish.
Yes. How do you vote?
How do you vote?
I got it.
How do you vote?
So do you need, do you need me to vote?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, all voting in favor. Vote of six. And a motion passed.
Thank you.
Just don't mess up.
Item...
We're kinda all wondering about this one, aren't we?
Item number seven, return to school plan.
Okay, so we talked to you and gave you copies of the return to school plan last month. Sorry, I was trying to get on my stuff. So the plan itself hasn't changed a ton at this point. I am happy to report that the cases are down within the county. As of today, there are four active cases, but there's been no increase in three days. So that's a positive. I met with the health department yesterday, day before yesterday, and presented our plan to them again and our conversations again, and they are supportive of that plan.
Which one?
Level two, which is what we're gonna talk about.
The four active cases, countywide or school district?
Countywide. We have no... So we did have two employees that were exposed by another employee. They are, they've returned to work. We have had, you know, we've had athletics all summer. We've had no cases in athletics or in summer school. So we're thankful for that. So when we talk about our plans, we talk about level one, level two, level three, level four. Level one is school as usual. We know we're not there. We talked about... Just level two is cleaning procedures. Additional cleaning procedures, which we'll talk about. Level one is just we come to school like we always do and like we did last year at the beginning of the year.
But isn't level two, is that the hybrid?
No, level three is the hybrid.
Okay.
Level four is virtual.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
So we, you were, when people ask Mr. Dalton and I, we say today we are on level two because obviously spikes in cases, things can happen. So, and Mr. Dalton's gonna share some survey data from parents, from teachers or kids really, and kids and parents.
No, I ended up with the staff surveys too.
And staff surveys, so. But just to update you kind of where we are in preparation. So most of our supplies, cleaning supplies have come in. Most of our, we are waiting on some masks, but we do have a stockpile of 10,000 masks that have come in from the health department. We got clear face shields that were requested by several of our teachers. I got 100 of those yesterday or two days ago from the health department and some nursing supplies hasn't, haven't come in. So the health department graciously gave us some and tellers come in and we can replace them. So, so obviously we are, again, I said, waiting on a few supplies. Our sheet, the barriers for lunch room, the library, our isolation rooms, panels for the nurse's office will be, should be here tomorrow or Monday. We feel pretty confident about where we are. We had a really good cleaning schedule set up. We're gonna clean 67 restrooms at 10 o'clock, 1 o'clock, and at night. We're gonna try to clean touchpoints. We're gonna provide cleaner to teachers in their, for their classrooms. So if they feel like they need to clean, you know, if they have a kid that starts coughing or something and we have to remove that kid, they can clean the area that that child was in. We talked about requiring, we have bus driver training last week. We talked to bus drivers about bus, cleaning their buses. We have, the county graciously purchased masks for the, for buses and bus drivers. They also purchased one gallon pump-up sprayers and chemical to clean the buses. And so we have that set up where the bus drivers can get to it very easily in our maintenance building. It's in a dispenser. They just push the button and it fills the bottle up, mixes itself with water. Should be fairly easy for them to access. The masks are in that same location, so if they, if they run out of masks and need more masks, they can just grab them. They just need to sign out what they took so we can keep track of what we give out in case we need to get more. Staff and student masks that we will give them, we're hoping will be here, if not next week, the week after. If that, something happened and they were delayed, we have those 10,000 surgical masks as well. Masks don't stop everything, we understand that. We have done a pretty good, or are trying to do a good job of, we believe recess is important, so we've split that playground up and kids will be able to rotate, but they'll stay with their cohort group. Doing the same thing at the middle school. I don't know, I just feel like I'm rambling, Mr. Dalton. I feel like I'm repeating a lot of what I already did in July, but teachers, Mr. Dalton's gonna talk to you about all the teach, work the teachers have done over the last couple of weeks and will continue to do before school starts. We understand that we're bringing 1,300 kids to a campus, minus some families that have chosen to go virtual, and we, we're gonna do the best we can possibly do. So we are, the nurses are going through contact tracing through Johns Hopkins University. So if you have a case that's positive, you can track who could have been exposed. I, I went through that course this week and I've completed it. There's gotta be really one person that disseminates information for COVID-related items, and that's gonna be me. I work with our nurses and we'll work with the health department, but there just needs to be one point of contact for the health department. So I went through that, so I have a better understanding of all of it as well. Six and a half hours long, it was pretty interesting. So we feel like we're in a pretty good spot, but Mr. Dalton's gonna share some information and then I know you've got questions that I want to try to answer.
Well, I am confident I'm gonna be a pretty nice guy. Since last month, there were one of the things I wanted to touch on, so, you know, we had that plan. We had a meeting with, what was it? We had eighty, some staff members.
Yeah, in attendance.
Either a person or a person that looked through that when we first had it out. We talked about it here last month, the last meeting, and then pushed it out to parents. So some things we've done since then, we pushed our initial survey back out to staff. We'd sent it out to staff earlier in the summer just because you start with teacher availability because that dictates some of the things we're able to offer on the backside instructionally. I think when teachers first saw it, we didn't have any cases in the county. So in the meantime, we'd had cases. Staff wanted to see what the plan was anyway, so we sent that out. I am gonna pull up a summary of the, of the survey data. I'm probably the only person that likes to look through line by line and stretch these bit. We sort through that, so it was, that's one thing that we've done. So staff will be going today and update the response. Well, I'm comfort level. Same thing for parents. I think since we pushed that out, I know that 250 go back, parents that had already responded once go back in and adjust. A lot of those, they were coming seated, some of those virtually. As of right now, we have heard from 1,158 of our students. I could now mention we're around 1,300. You know, a typical response on the survey.
It's not that high.
We're about 1,000 beyond that. You know, and I think, I'll pull that up, we're around 180 that say they're wanting to pursue virtual instruction at this time. You know, we are asking families, if you choose virtual to start, you've got to stay virtual through the semester. And the reason that is is because of distance of that. We make accommodations for students to be at home and teachers to serve those students. If we didn't have, that big reports to come back seated, all of a sudden that overloads our seating classes and that is certainly came distance and we didn't get in just... Certainly can't distance, and we didn't get it, just increasing the class size, so that, that's what that looks like. Now, I feel like we're leaving things out. I'm going to pull up the information here while we're getting.
Yeah, pull it up, and then we'll talk about elementary, middle school, and high school, a little bit.
And we have, you know, I, that's what I was going to talk about when I said I'd be repeating myself. So, we've offered training throughout the month of July, I think I looked today, we've had over 300 sessions attended. We just have lots of teachers that have, that have put in lots of time. So, and again, this is the summary. So, this is the staff survey. 92 responses. I'll scroll down here, so. Try to type that out so you can actually see it. 92 staff responses. 72 of which I am comfortable the school starting is normal this fall with, that question was worth it, with the precautions that we've got in place. Seven staff members indicating I am not comfortable returning to seat classes in the fall. We're currently following up with, with those folks to, to identify the specifics, we've already visited with, with several of them. Just trying to answer those questions. You know, so we've had follow-up conversations with, with staff and with parents. We just want to outline what it, what it's going to look like. You know, I've said this multiple times throughout this. Our parents has been of understanding, difficult with this, is anything we've, I've had parents call in and, hey, I don't like this part of the plan. And then follow up with, no, I recognize there are people who feel different than what I do in this, so. Again, our community's been, been very understanding as we go through this. 13 indicating they've got reservations, and that. I've, I posted those comments here, I won't read through all of those, you guys had those. It ranges from, hey, I'm hesitant, but I'm not confident we can deliver virtual instruction effectively for, for my students. You know, and you'll see some specifics there. You can tell what grade level they're talking about. You'll see some, you just lots of things like that. Whether it's concerns about our ability to deliver instruction, concerns about the internet, things like that. You know, we like to think. You know, we, we recognize we've got families that don't have internet access. So, we have a family, you know, if we were to open in level two or even level three, if we had families that were choosing to be at home. You know, we think we've got processes in place to be able to meet their needs. You know, it's not going to be, well, if you don't have internet.
You don't get back, you don't, you don't get back.
That's not what that looks like. Put some of these ladies over here, we've done a lot of training on, you know, if they may record a lesson and download that. So, fine, I can't access that. With my internet, but I can still take that home and, you know, I may be a day behind or something like that, but I, I, I'm glad access to what that lesson looked like. You know, we've even gone through, hey, I'm going to use math, I was an old math teacher, here's this worksheet. I pretty much know what the problem areas are, I may record a little minute and a half reminder, now, hey, guys, remember all this set of problems? Here's what you're watching for, this is what's going to give you trouble. In addition to that lesson, just, just some things like that that we've got in our mind that we think will help meet those needs. We're going to ask parents and students that are choosing to stay at home, hey, we're going to take you through a training. Again, for whatever your situation looks like. If I've got the fastest internet in the county, we're going to take you through a training. If I have no internet at all, we're going to take you through a training. Again, in a small group, obviously, but probably they're choosing to go that route. I'm not comfortable with large group setting, but again, we think we've got structures in place to be able to support those folks. I'm going to go down through here now. This is our staff feedback. Again, depends on the severity of COVID cases, I left that out, that's probably the most obvious. You know, a lot of questions about depending on where the cases are at that time, how can we serve our students? Just what you would expect to see probably, somebody said they have hesitation. When I pull this up. Now, you're looking at, and it says 614 responses, and I just told you over 1,100 students. Well, one of those questions is, how many students do you have in your home that we're accounting for? That's how we're accounting for that number of students. You know, obviously, lots of multi-student homes, that's how we count for how many student, students we've accounted for in this feedback. What you see here, again, I tried to spell that out, 614 total responses. At this time, 1,155 students, so I think I've got three more today, since I updated this. What you see here, 209 said they were not comfortable returning now. You made a question, some of my numbers here, I want the gap to be this. 209 say they're not comfortable returning, whereas then they have 179 indicating they would prefer virtual. Some of that comes from follow-up. So, we're trying to contact those families individually, to make sure the ranges we're talking about. We're trying to contact those families and talk to them through what this looks like. It's not going to look like what virtual was last spring, when, I mean, basically, we had zero preparation for what was happening. You know, everybody's, it'll be accountability, we're responsible for the same kinds of, you know, those expectations on, on keeping up with work, it's just going to be, we just want to be clear on that. So, some families, as we go through that, some of it's as we talk through what the, the steps we got in place, hey, you know why I'm comfortable with that, what we're counting, so. That's why there's just a discrepancy there. Some of it is, the specifics to virtual instruction, they're saying, hey, yeah, we want to be at home, we don't want virtual because we don't have internet access, we've, we've got that accounted for, that's what we're making those follow-ups. Questions on that? You know, we are still. I'm trying to word this correctly. Hard to push this wrong. We've got to set a deadline for, for everybody involved, for our families, for our students.
We're making plans currently that could have to change, and that's not fair to teachers.
It's frustrating for everybody involved. And it's frustrating on the parent side, frustrating for teachers, it's for everybody involved, and that. I was going through some of our documentation today, but we give the Department of Health, Student Services, and that's, it's updated three times since we met last.
Correct.
And this is going to continue to be that way. But we're trying to close that gap, you know, you see 12.9% were still, we have hesitation, we're trying to follow up with those folks. And get firmer numbers on, on where we are. Scroll down there, this may lead to Dr. Dial, some of what you were talking about. This is the number of students we're looking at right now, that are wanting virtual instruction at each grade level and total at each building.
So, that looks different, in, in our opinion, at the elementary, middle school, and high school. When you start looking at, we'll use fourth grade, 24th graders wanting virtual. Okay? That, in my opinion, is it becomes a virtual teacher. So, that's about our class size. So, we have a virtual teacher for fourth grade. And everybody else is seated. So, they're responsible for working with those kids on a daily basis, whether, you know, they set up small group times, whether they set up individual times, they can connect with that kid on the computer, they can connect with that child on the phone. But be able to, to check with them. You start getting into, you know, at kindergarten, 10, first grade, eight, you know, not, there's no final decision here when I make this statement, you know. Some of that discussion was, do we have a K1 virtual teacher? You know, third grade is kind of 13 in second grade, third grade, so 13 in second grade, we could probably make that virtual teacher work. Seven and se, and, sorry, seven and third grade, what does that look like? That could be a virtual teacher that also worked with students that needed extra help that were seated during the day. Just trying, looking at what we're doing with class sizes will make those determinations. You know, if I pull seven kids out, do the rest of the third grade teachers have too many kids, or are they still pretty good?
What we've tried to do is talk through some scenarios.
With teachers.
With teachers and building principals, and now I know principals are having meetings in the building level, because. Fact of the matter is, it's just different developing, you know, where our students are at, at high school age versus lower elementary, that just, it just looks different. It just does, we're, we're trying to meet the same needs, or serve, you know, offer the same services, but it just looks different. It just is going to.
So, as you move five through 12, the issue is, you have content area-specific teachers. So, that's the struggle there. Do we have enough Algebra I kids to have a virtual Algebra I section? Those are the things that we're looking at. Or do we greatly reduce a class size, a section size of Algebra I, put eight kids in that Algebra I section? And that, and that is a time that that person also manages the virtual kids, because they have 10 virtual kids, we'll say. You know, those virtual kids could, could log in and they could actually see what's happening in the classroom and get some instruction, or. Gives that teacher, she doesn't have as many kids in the classroom, it gives her a little bit more time to help with that instruction. Do we have kids that have no internet service and we need to get them on campus after school to get extra help? Well, then we pay teachers to do tutoring after hours, and then we can do that. So, we're, we're still walking through the process, because our numbers are fluctuating a little bit, we've got to give that hard deadline. And then we're going to, and we are currently talking to teachers. But then, we're going to really need to make some really hard, fast decisions, working with them to make sure that it works for their daily life. Because they're the ones doing the work.
Questions?
So, could you give a, just a quick run-through of what the day's going to look like, let's just say, like a middle school student? And they ride the bus, so what, just kind of let us know what they're going to use him?
Yep, got you.
Just the differences.
Got you. So, middle school kid, Larry Mittson's picking up a middle school student on his route, okay? So, Larry pulls up, the middle school student gets on, Larry's going to have hand sanitizer on his bus, he's going to have masks on his bus. We're going to say they can't social distance on Larry's bus, we're going to say he has too many kids. Larry's, if that young man has a mask and has it on when he gets on Larry's bus, hey, make sure you use a hand sanitizer, he's going to have a seating chart on his bus. So, we, we know where that child sits. The student doesn't have a mask, Larry's going to ask him, hey, do you need a mask? Because you don't have one, Larry's going to offer him one. Going to use hand sanitizer, going to sit in his assigned seat on the bus. So, Larry's bringing, brings the child to school, drops him off, so those, those kids are going to go immediate, immediately to their classroom. Okay? Where we are going to feed them breakfast. So, fifth grader, we're going to feed that fifth grader breakfast. Then they're going to start their day. So, they, their day's going to look, we're not isolating them in their fifth grade, they're still going to go, because they're subject area teachers. They're still going to go to their other courses.
With or without events?
So, they would, at this, at this point, is our belief that we're looking at, in the classroom, they would not have a mask on, unless they can, they're packed in there and cannot social distance.
As long as they can distance.
As long as they can distance, and we are looking at every classroom to see if we can do that. As they are going from class to class, we would ask that they wear a mask, because they are in contact with people outside of their cohort group. I know a mask does not prevent everything, and I understand, and I've read all that CDC, all the CDC research. But it does help lessen that issue. So, when they get to their class, go to their assigned seat in that class, they could remove their mask as long as they could keep separation. They go outside to recess, they would not have to have their mask on recess outside.
Can a lunch visit the classroom?
Lunch, so, yes, thank you. So, lunch at the elementary and middle school, this is how it looks. So, let's say kindergarten is eating lunch in their classroom today. First grade's going to be in the cafeteria. Second grade's going to be in their classroom. Third grade's going to be in the cafeteria, fourth grade is going to be in their classroom. The next day it switches. They take turns using the cafeteria. We, Dr. Hall has gone through the cafeteria and measured, he can, he can set a cohort or group or a class group together, and then he can separate, make a separation. And put the next group together. Can't do that if we're running everybody through the cafeteria at the same time, K through four. Middle school looks very much the same as that, fifth grade in the lunchroom, sixth grade in the classroom, seventh grade in the lunchroom, eighth grade in the classroom, the next day it's flop, the flip flops. High school is different, because it's a different animal in itself, so we're going to have three locations. Kayla and I have met with the principals of all three buildings, so. Kids can get lunch in the cafeteria, they can get lunch in the commons area, they can get lunch in the concession stand. Okay? And my understanding, my, my belief is, half of the, half of, and you guys correct me if I'm wrong, okay? Half of the kids, so let's say it's the west building, half has lunch shift, has one lunch shift, correct?
Uh huh.
Making that statement correct, so half of the west building is going to eat lunch in the gym, the patio, the commons area, or the lunchroom, where they can spread out. My belief is.
Well, we were talking today, we said they'd be in our rooms every day.
In our advisory.
In our advisory, every day.
I think we have, we're trying to loosen some of that, I will, we'll, I'll talk to Dr. Nash and be sure about that.
Okay.
High school was the only one that hadn't made their final decisions, so, but we'll talk about that. Trying to alternate in the next half of the lunch, does that make sense? So, just trying to lessen the number of groups. So, I'll, I'll, I'll talk to her about that. I'm not sure what that thought process.
Doesn't matter, we got a few kids.
Yeah, we're going, we're going to figure it out.
But we would appreciate it.
Alternate lunches.
Yeah.
Yeah. Best we can, and then. Masks are going to be required on the bus and in transition.
And in transition between classes. You know, I had some concern from, I had a couple of questions from bus drivers that I'd like to correct. So, they, you know, how do I make sure they wear them? So, well, first of all, if you've got one kid on the bus, he doesn't have to have one on. And it's, I understand you're driving a bus, you're doing the best you can possibly do, your attention has to be on the road. If you see a kid, just like if they see a kid doing something wrong, hey, stop that, hey, can you put your mask on? If a kid is obstinate about it, that's our issue. He's going to let us know that, or she's going to let us know that, we're going to deal with that, just like we would with the issue. That answer your question?
So, yeah, if you have a student that can't wear a mask for various reasons, do you have a?
Yep, talked to, talked to a parent the other day for medical reasons.
Right.
Talked to a mom, she was good, I mean, she was great, I said, hey, if you'll bring me something, well, I said, will the doctor write him a note? Absolutely, bring me something, a doctor's note, we can take care of that at all, for sure.
On the bus and in the school?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, already had a conversation with Grandma Smith about it.
We'll have a list of if any students like that on the bus.
Yes, I would, yeah.
Have a, and also the ones who go on a virtual tour would be not have a list till we don't look for them the first day.
As soon as we have that final list, we will. But yes, so that, you know, that particular student, I'm not broadcasting that they can't wear a mask, but I'm telling the people to be, to know that.
Sounds like other than the bus, the bus could be an extended period of time to watch to, to wear a mask, you know, some, right, hour and a half, I don't know. Longest, and then, but then the transition period, you're talking about five, six minutes?
Five minutes.
Five minutes.
Are you requiring the teachers to wear masks?
We are, because they're the high school.
For what time?
When they are not social distanced from kids.
So, if they're at the front of the classroom, they don't have to, is that correct?
If they're six feet away from students teaching in the board, they don't have to have a mask. And then several, like I said before, several teachers have asked for clear visors, we've got those as well.
Well, I need a break, I'm having those things on, please.
So, I'm actually, we're getting, today, somebody else will send them 65 clear masks in the state. The state has made available, I'm going to miss this number, 2 million masks? A huge number that is going to be brought to South West Missouri store in the school district, and we can go up and get as many as we want.
Okay, well, I want to tell you that I'm very proud of you and what you've done, all of you. With Springfield being sued and the school board being sued. It was that you, you are going to seat our children, I think that's fabulous. I hope it continues to be that way, because I think the kids need to get back into the classrooms, they need to be back with their coverts in crime. They need to be back with their teachers, I can't tell you how many kids have said how much they miss their teachers, so congratulations. So, then we're going to seat the kids, and we're not going to go to the hybrid method, I think you all should be very proud. I think you all should be very proud. I think it's, I think it's fabulous, and that's my opinion.
I'm not going to promise you we won't be there at some point.
I'm just saying right now, I have, I have high hopes.
Yeah, we're going to absolutely do our best to be seated instruction five days a week.
Yeah, it's, it's amazing, it really is. After reading all the stuff in Springfield and Miss Holnicki's lawsuit and stuff.
I think Springfield's a different animal, 69 buildings, 25,000 kids. It's a different animal.
It is, and, but a lot of the rule aren't even trying to seat everyone too, you know? So I think you guys have done a great job.
The county numbers.
County numbers help. I will tell you, Valerie Reese and her nurses at the health department are Godsend us. They, they answer every time I call, they answer any question I have. We communicate on a daily basis, and she has been wonderful to work with.
Well, based on this survey, I think we should all be very proud of our teachers and that they're willing to go back into the classrooms, and I think that's wonderful.
It's the best part of what we do.
Yeah, it's just like, that's, I, when you said the teacher survey, I was like kind of scared for a minute, but that's wonderful, that really is, and you all are.
And you've heard me say, I mean, my teachers have put in lots of.
Oh, my gosh.
300 PD sessions is what I, as I was going through that today, I mean.
Well, I tried to get on one Zoom thing with y'all and I couldn't even do it, so.
No, it's going to look different.
It was beyond my scope.
Zoom meetings are, have become the norm, correct? I had never used Zoom one time until March 12. And I've used it 100 times.
Well, the one time I tried to get on it.
Three times today.
You know, we, I'm talking about recording little videos and things, and I said, now when I watch the video, I look and say, I'm just as ridiculous as what I think I do, but I'm got so used to doing it, and it, once you do it, it's easy. You can explain it and you can send it, there's just things we can do that we would never have considered.
Are you all concerned about the virtual students getting what they need? I mean, is that a concern, or do you believe they're going to get what they need?
Elementary is a little different.
The ones that chose virtual.
You've got high school, elementary.
High school's different.
Drastically different.
Needs of drastically different learners.
But do you believe that the virtual?
I really believe that our students at the high school level have been prepared and trained, and they will be capable of doing what they need to do.
What about the younger ones?
We are concerned about the elementary.
Honestly, because I mean, a lot of it, they can't, I mean, we can offer anything, but it's, it's way different with little kids.
So it's, so it's educating the parents.
And that's what we're talking about.
I didn't know, I liked the idea of having them come in for the training.
That is part of what we're going to do. If you choose to go virtual, we need you to come in for a training. To make sure the parent knows how to get on, make sure they have good Wi-Fi access, make sure the parent knows how to access the different tools that the teachers are going to be using.
That's wonderful.
So, so if we go, if we have to go stage four now?
Okay.
Are we at that level? How close are we to where everyone will be ready? Are we?
We're getting there.
We're still far off. Because all those students, all those parents that were going to let their kid go now, they've been trained, they haven't been trained, right? So, so we're going to have to step back.
But with the numbers dropping, we might.
So you're talking like, are students being ready, paying teachers?
Yeah, just are we ready for the virtual at stage four? Or, you know, where you're getting everyone prepared now that says that they'd say if they're, they're not, they're uncomfortable, so? How ready are we for the rest of it?
No, I think I'm going to answer your question. Because we met with, we had our first full day, PD day Monday. Well, it's something we talked about, so every year, teachers are training students on the procedures. What that's going to look like now, hey, I'm, I'm training students on how to access Google Classroom. I'm training students on, hey, here's what this looks like, even though they're seated.